Good evening, everyone. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. And it's January 28th of 2021. Let me start off by taking the roll call, even though we just did it informally there. We've got Howard here, Norm here, Sherman, Andy, Dana, Mary Beth, myself, and Jerry in alphabetical order. So thanks for attending, folks. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed? Okay. Public comment, I don't see any members of the public there, so we'll move down to new business. And the first thing we have is something that's an interesting development in town. At the last select board meeting, Bill brought to the board's attention an email that he'd received from Lyle Jepson, who's now with the Chamber in Economic Development of Rutland Region. And there's a mid, a business from the Midwest interested in putting up a 20,000 square foot center for cannabis, marijuana. Apparently, details are very sketchy. And they're, they're looking for locations throughout Rutland Town. But it looks like they, they are interested in retail, production, and cultivation at this facility. And three sites were, at least three sites were mentioned at the select board meeting in Rutland Town itself. The former site of Rutland Plywood, the mall, and also somewhere on Randberry Road. So there, this email went out to several different towns. It looks like Rutland Town and Brandon have expressed interest so far. Brandon is going to put it to vote in Town Meeting Day, I believe. I'm not sure if other towns are going to, are going to express interest that they're still talking about it.
Lyle said the only other town was, was Brandon, Proctor, and us so far that we're kind of getting serious about it.
Okay. Now, you're a little bit low. Let me turn you up. Is, is Proctor going to vote on it in Town Meeting Day as well? Do you know?
Lyle didn't tell, Lyle didn't say anything to me about it, but he just said those were, those are the three towns that were, that had gone back to him.
Okay. So during that same meeting, the select board passed a motion unanimously to allow this kind of development in town. And to talk further with, with the business people interested in setting this up. I do believe there needs to be a town vote. I think that's part of the legislation that passed last year. That it has to be voted on either at town meeting or in a special election. And Bill, I don't know if you heard more about that?
I have not, no.
Okay, so maybe that's something we should bring up with the select board next week. I, I wasn't clear that they were aware of that or not. The, the motion came and was passed really quickly. That, yeah, we're interested. We approve this development and, and that was that. Right? It was a pretty simple motion.
Yep. But yeah, so yeah, it, it, it does need to be at their annual town meeting or any special town meeting.
Yeah, especially called meeting, probably.
Yep.
Yeah.
And they need to have water and sewer.
Yes.
So kind of interesting stuff that we'll probably be hearing more about. And that's really all I had on that topic. Was there's any, any questions or anything, any comments you want me to bring back to the select board? Okay. The next item, Bill, you thought that you might be getting some information on a possible development on Dire and Middle Roads?
Yes. So I, I did, I did talk with that gentleman for a little while the other day. So we had, we had somebody reach out asking about developing a property on Dire Road, which is a little road that right now goes to nowhere behind Mountain View Equipment next to Formula Ford, to give you a little landmark. So you go down Middle Road, you go past the Mountain View Equipment driveway, and the next right is Dire Road. There's nothing on it right now except access to some agricultural land. The developer talked to me. They are interested in building up to five multifamily housing units out there. So that's what, that's what they're looking for. So he was looking, we talked about zoning, but there isn't any, so he was happy about that. And then just, he, he didn't get into a lot of specifics, but that's, that's what the project is. But we did talk about the municipal water and sewer, what they would need to do, but that's, that's what they're looking into right now.
Okay, five units, five, five units total?
Five buildings, yeah. No, no, five units, five buildings.
Okay.
How many units per building if we got that specific?
That hasn't, they're not, they're not to that point yet. This is still fairly new, but he didn't want, he didn't really want to get into a lot of specifics. I did try to get a little more, but that was all that was available.
Okay, and probably there is a land sale that has to happen, or is that already happened?
There would be. I, I don't, I, I don't think there's been any property transfers for that. So the board did meet with the landowner down there, and I forget what their name was, but they did meet with the landowner down there about changing the classification of the road because they wanted maintenance on it because they were looking to sell that land off, and I guess that didn't, that didn't happen. So, but as far as I know, there's been no property transfers off there yet.
No, there is none.
Bill? This, this is Norman. I biked that area a lot, and I've never seen a sign for Dire Road. I'm a little puzzled.
There's not, there's not a structure on the road, Norm, so I don't think there even is a road sign for it.
Is it, let's see, if I'm coming across on so Alphrahia?
Okay.
Yeah.
No.
If you're, if you're on Route 7 heading south, and you turn onto Middle Road, you have Formula Ford on your left and John Deere on your right, Dire Road runs behind the John Deere Building.
Oh, is that that little dirt path?
Yes, it's an unpaved, no structure road, but it's, it has a name, so.
Okay, yeah, I've, yeah, I have driven by that, I bike by it, and one time I got off and just walked down it because I just, and there's nothing there.
It's a town road.
Yep, and that's a town road? It's not maintained, is it?
It's a Class 4 road right now.
Yeah, okay.
So it is, but it's, it's the, it's on the, it's on the end of the list.
Well, right. Looks like a driveway.
They used the Middle Road.
Look, that's, that's an interesting project. Certainly add to the tax base.
Yep.
That would be similar to something probably like a Dell Stanley.
Exactly, yeah.
Full River Road.
Okay. Hey, Bill, is there anything new on the, the Flori Plaza? Kind of seems like it's been stalled out for the longest time.
They're, they're working on it. It's, they're, they're not, they're not working at a, at a fast pace, but they're, they're, they're working on that all the time. There's people there on a regular basis working on that. They're working on the inside right now, but they've done a lot of work. They've, they've replaced all the windows, they've, they've put up a whole bunch of siding on it, reset of the building, like, no, they're, they're, they're making regular progress on it.
Okay. Good to hear. Okay. So I guess that brings us down to what Jerry brought up last time. And we kind of tabled it, and I'm still not quite sure what, what to do in how, how to approach this. But Jerry, you were, you were thinking there was a need for us to restrict or tailor what we ask people, developers?
Well, I think that, I think that what kind of struck me was that we were asking things like, how many cars were they going to have in a building? That's something that we have no jurisdiction and no, why are we asking that? And I'm not saying we should curtail it or we should stop asking. I know we're all curious. I know we all want to know where these things are happening, but why are we asking that? I just think it's potentially pushing developers to think that they may need to go somewhere else. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be involved. And that, but I just, you know, how, how tall was the building was another question. How tall was it going to be? That's, that has nothing to do with us. I, I'm sorry, I just don't think it does. I, if we had, if we had zoning, it absolutely would.
I know we put some restrictions when we did the, the view sheds. We put some restrictions about the color of buildings, you know, in as much as, do they blend into the background and that sort of thing? I can't remember whether height is on there. And I, you know, I don't know if we've, the people we've been talking to are on those pieces of property that would fall into the view sheds. But if they were, then some of these might be legitimate. But I, I see where you're going, you know?
It was the same, the other thing was about, you know, we all have, we all have feelings about where people should and shouldn't enter certain properties, but we certainly don't, that's, that's totally a Byron call. What, you know, in the state of Vermont, where people enter, where curb cuts are. I'm not, you know, once again, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be involved. I just think we need to be careful to not start sounding like we're going to have a say as to whether those things happen, because we have very limited say in that. That's all.
Yes, that's, that's very true. That's very true. Mary Beth?
Along those lines, I think it'd be a good idea just to be, have something consistent. So when someone comes to us, just have like a checklist or, you know, just a list of things that we know that we all agree that we would ask any developer or property owner, just to make sure it's consistent. That's another thing that we've been talking about that I think makes sense.
Could we add something at the end that allows us to include other appropriate questions that might pertain to that kind of development?
Sure, I think, oh, go ahead, Simon.
Okay, Dana, and Andy, did you have your hand up as well?
No, I did not.
Okay, so Dana, then Sherman, I guess.
I was thinking we could do is, is, is have a statement in the beginning when we start to speak to someone to say that, that we have, we, we're going to ask you questions to give us a a comprehensive understanding of what you're doing, but we don't want to imply that the answers to all these questions will, will disqualify you or anything. We're just trying to get enough information to fully understand, not to, not to qualify you, but, but to understand what you're doing. So I mean, you could word it better than I did, but let them know that we're asking questions, but we're not, these questions are not questions that we're going to use to say yes or no.
And
I'm not saying not limit, not try to limit it, but at least say that upfront so that if we have to go outside that limit, at least the people should have some understanding of what we're doing.
Yeah, Dana?
I was going to say that to everyone's point, if we have that list, as Mary Beth was saying, we will then be consistent in the questions that we're sure to ask everybody. And depending on the circumstances, something might pop into mind that we said, hmm, we hadn't thought about that. And then ask for more information about that so that we can refer them to the appropriate department within the town or the state for that matter, to get other questions answered, that we don't have any jurisdiction over and that we want to help them move their process along. So having that stock set of questions, we could actually provide it to them. They can come in and make our process a little more efficient. So that they would be answering the questions that we know we're going to ask, and if something pops up that we hadn't thought about, we could certainly, as Sherman mentioned with his disclaimer, we just ask another question. It's not too dissimilar to what we do for an interview of hiring somebody. We have a, a stock set of questions that we're going to ask everybody, and then a few questions that are going to be different depending on the area of expertise that the person is applying for a job in. So I think it's just good practice.
Yeah, I would just want to make sure we did all of our due diligence. I don't know if you folks have been following what's happening in West Palet. Palet has zoning, but they have this paramilitary facility out there that's terrorizing the, the neighborhood and is about to be shut down. But it went through zoning as an educational facility or something like that. So I wouldn't want to box us in so much that we, you know, when we get a proposal, it doesn't quite sound right, that we're, we're not allowed to ask, you know, enough questions about that. But that's an extreme example. Norm?
Yeah, um, I sort of am of two minds. I think it makes sense and maybe to develop a basic set of questions and perhaps even give it to the applicant before they get there so they know what to expect. But no one shoe fits all feet. And I think we have to have some flexibility depending on the nature of the development. If it's a, if it's a two-lot subdivision or a three-lot subdivision, you know, that's one thing. If it's a single family, you know, and they need a subdivision. Those are fairly simple. But one of the things that concerns me is if somebody or developer comes in with a project that's going to be subject to Act 250, where we get substantial deference to our plan, and we've worked very hard and very amicably to arrive at a plan that we all agreed on and in a large part specifically for that purpose. And I think that's a whole different ballgame, and I'm not sure how much we can tailor in advance to that because there's a lot more considerations. And while certainly it's not zoning, you know, attention to our plan is necessary, and it, for lack of a better word, it approaches some elements of zoning because of the nature of the plan and the deference that the Act 250 people give to it. So I think in designing questions, we have to keep that aspect of our plan and our duties in, in line. I don't think it's a bad idea. Sometimes we've taken a half an hour on something that maybe we could have been more economical with, and I think, Dana, I think you're right, maybe this will tailor our proceedings and, you know, get us a little more focused, and that's always helpful. But I do think we ought to have the flexibility to open questions, and then the chair will have to determine whether they're reasonable or whatever term we put for the broad last, last item on the list, all questions relevant to the proceeding, whatever. So the chair has some discretion to allow further discussion. Don't think we want to tie the chair's hand, hands, whoever the chair may be. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, our, our biggest job here, of course, is subdivision, you know, property lines, all stuff related to a properly done survey. That all of the, you know, we got to write monuments and ties and locations to, that checklist that we go through really covers just about everything that, that we need to do. You know, we were asking about the trees, the contours, questions about the map, does it have North Arrow, does it, does it have this, that, or the other thing? But that, that one checklist that we go through really covers pretty much, I think, what our job is, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it works. Yeah, I think it works for those who are actually applying for subdivisions or boundary line adjustments. What we may, what may need some help is how we approach those people that just come in and, you know, fact finding. They're just, just, they're just giving us information. They've got a potential project, and they just want a little guidance. Right? Isn't that mostly what we're talking about here where we don't have any parameters? That they, they don't have a fully formed project yet.
But isn't that, isn't that something that we need to be careful of? That, that guy, the guy who, the particular Realtor that came in and was talking about that, if, if it was me and I was that Realtor, I would have went back from our meeting and said, and, and thought to myself, well, they want to know how many cars are coming in and out, how tall our building's going to be. I'm not so sure that in that location's the right spot. That's the way I would have taken away from that, and that's what started my mind thinking about this altogether, is that we shouldn't necessarily push a potential project away when we don't have the jurisdiction to stop how many cars go in and out.
Right.
And how tall a building is. That's my only point, and that's what this has been all along. I'm not, I'm not down on, I don't want to limit anybody, and in fact, I really kind of enjoy getting more in depth about it, but I think we need to be careful on that initial visit that we don't ask questions that seem like we're going to be able to limit their construction because we simply can't.
Right. Dana? Uh, you're muted, Dana.
Yep, I just realized that. Following up on what Jerry said, I think that when we do have a subdivision or a boundary line adjustment, as, as Howard mentioned too, we have a script. It's when we don't that we need a script, and so to Jerry's point, let's put the script together of the things we're going to, to offer in terms of, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? Here are the things that you need to think about. And then we don't stray and start overloading or overwhelming somebody who's coming in for a piece of advice about how to proceed, so.
Yeah. Okay, so how do we go about putting together this? Oh, Andy, you do have your hand up.
Dana kind of took my thought away, but I wanted to put that in. That script is what we really need. We, we need some written, written guidelines so that when people come to us, they have a little more information right when they, right when they show up to start.
And have we ever had anything like that in the past that's been used? Is there any?
I don't think so. Not that I can think of.
Yeah. Yeah, Norm?
Um, I think this is fascinating. And I think it can help us streamline and, and help us, in a sense, not be adversarial, at least to somebody on the first time in where they're looking for information, as much information as we are, when their plans aren't set. And I think this will help that. One of the things that occurred to me is that most of the people who come in aren't aware of going to the road commissioner for the curb cut permit. And are there other similar type permits that we, you know, that we should make an applicant or a potential applicant aware of on the front end? So that in this initial meeting where we're tailoring our questions, we can say, by the way, you need to talk to road commissioner, and you need to talk to, I don't know who else. But if there are others, that's a good opportunity. So when they come in, their ducks are in a row. And we can, now, now Bill may have taken care of some of this on the front end anyway, but that's one thing where I think we could, I say this a little bit tongue in cheek, clean up our act a little bit and be a little more efficient.
Yeah, there wouldn't be too many permits, you know, there would, there, there would be.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
There wouldn't be too many permits, that there'd be a state wastewater one. There would be the Byron and driveways. I'm not sure if there's anything else there. And then, of course, there's our stormwater permit for land disturbance in those areas, but I think that's about it.
So Barbara, the previous question that you asked was, how should we move forward? So I've opened up a Word doc, and I'll be happy to be your scribe, and I'll send this to Bill when we're done. If people just want to brainstorm and tell me what they want on the list, I'll send it to Bill. He can put it together. He can get us a draft for next time, and then we can discuss whether that's comprehensive enough. How's that?
Yeah, you got a deal.
I got a deal. All right. So whoever wants to start talking, I mean, if you've got the stormwater permit, I'll, I'll type that in. And if you want, I'll share my screen. If somebody can give me that permission, I'll share the screen, and then you can correct anything that I'm mistaken about. How's that?
You should be able to share your screen.
All right, I'll share my screen. It's been disabled by the host.
Yeah, it's not.
No? Okay.
Now, one second.
Sherman, I'm going to ask you if you can, if you can repeat your little disclaimer at the beginning when Dana's up and running here.
Oh, he, I, I, he can, he can say it, and I'll just type it in and then we'll wait.
It was perfect, Sherman.
I don't remember what I said.
You're good, Dana.
Okay, thanks.
Is not necessarily
In here.
disqualify you or to, or to improve your project, but rather to get a, a, a better understanding of it so that we can do as much as we can to make it easier for you going forward. I don't think that's what I said, but that's another way of saying it.
Yeah, it's another good way.
All right, I'll show you what I've gotten, and we can wordsmith it, or you can point me in the right direction. I just have to share the right. Where am I? I guess I want to share my screen, and then I want to share my doc. And here we go. Can you see that?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. And I'll make it a little bigger in case people want to. How's that? Okay, I've got stormwater permit, and then I didn't catch what Sherman said to begin with, but it said, does not necessarily disqualify you. It just helps us help you moving forward. So if you want to put something in front of that, I'll be happy to type that in. These questions, is that what it was?
Questions we are asking, yeah, for something, yeah.
The questions we are asking? Okay. Or we will be asking.
Yeah, we'll be asking.
And do not
Are not to approve or disqualify you.
Are not, okay, great.
Approve or disapprove.
Not to approve or disqualify you.
It just help us.
Well, well.
And not to approve.
Not intended to approve or to disqualify.
Okay, go ahead, Sherman.
As I said, the, the, the objective, our objective is to get a comprehensive understanding of your plan. To give us the information we
Okay.
Move forward. Yeah.
Help you. Okay.
Yeah.
Great. What else do we have?
So probably that should be at the top, Dana.
I, I, I'm just doing the brainstorm. We'll let Bill figure this out.
Oh, thanks.
All right.
We're always doing that to Bill.
Huh?
We're always doing that to Bill, like you, you figured it out.
But Dana, one has to be the curb cut for the road, any kind of road.
Yep, curb cuts.
And who they should, you know, who someone should contact, I guess.
And contact, uh, that's Byron who's the highway, right? Our highway commissioner?
Commissioner, yeah.
Do we contact him if it's a Route seven curb cut?
Now, that goes to the state, right?
That's V trans.
Yeah, so it just, it could be Byron of the state.
At the end of the first sentence, they're help you moving forward. Could we add something about saying and help you um find appropriate agencies that you would need to contact?
Is agency the word you're looking for?
Um.
Resources.
Find me a better one, possibly.
Well, I was hoping you would.
Find appropriate resources moving forward. Help you find appropriate resources.
Okay.
That works.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, what else we have?
And and then, uh, well, we've got this, this permit kind of section here. So we want a wastewater, state wastewater permit too, might be needed.
Yep.
I just had, I have a sort of a suggestion slash question. There's been some concern expressed by the fire chief from time to time about the width of driveways uh for purposes of access by the fire department. I don't know what that falls under, but if you just put something accessibility, oh. For, you know, for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, I don't think we have a permit per se for that, but.
There's something about road width under Byron.
Driveway access permit, when you, the driveway access permit Byron issues would need to address that.
I'm sorry?
The permit that Byron issues would have to address that.
Yes.
Oh, so going back to the wastewater permit, um. Could say like state permits, including wastewater. I know, um. When we were talking to one of the developers, we sent them information on, um. I forgot what it's called right now, but you um, contact the state and then they give you a list of any permits that you might need to have, like whether there's Act 250 wastewater, um, just drawing a blank on what it's called right now. Oh, a project review sheet. Um.
Doesn't the district commission do that when you go in and talk to them?
Um, yeah, or you can email the um, permit specialist in Rutland.
That's, that's the title, right?
Yeah, like Rick, um, making this last name right now too.
Yeah, I can't either. I can't either. But it's also norm for projects that don't um, meet the Act 250 threshold. You know, it's, you, you can call um, the specialists about, you know, any size project and what might be needed permit wise.
And then they give, you know, they won't say whether you need a wetland permit, but they'll give you the information for the state person to contact. You know, for the stormwater and wetland and wastewater. Whether you get a determination on whether you need it or not. But it covers all of the state.
Is it like Rick Oberkirk?
Yes, yep. So then we can just put this wastewater underneath that.
That's true.
About the spelling.
Um, it's O B E R.
O B.
Yeah. And then I, I think that's.
I'll, I'll turn it over to, uh, to Bill. That's a Bill thing.
Over, over to Bill.
Okay, what else do we have?
So that was a good suggestion Dana, to pull the state wa- state wastewater underneath that project review sheet or have it as a bullet or something.
Uh, yeah, once again, I just want to capture these. I'll put them here and I'll let Bill give us some, um. Um. Modified layout.
Yep.
Okay, what else?
Um, well, we've got, you know, our applications. If it's a subdivision or a boundary line adjustment. But, you know, Bill's probably gone over that with them, but probably still belongs on this list. Thanks for doing this Dana.
No problem. What else?
What about a subdivision that might be along Moon Brook or some of our waterways that we have all kinds of restrictions for? I don't know how we would handle it, but certainly a new property owner getting a piece of land involving Moon Brook should be made aware of of the of our plan that we have.
Yeah, that's what I meant by the stormwater permit.
Okay, that, that we cover it?
Well, there's the information sheet that covers, you know, what you can do right up to the brick. You know, and then there's the stormwater permit for the construction, but I guess it would be both, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else we need?
I have, I have a question. What if someone is just coming to us to tell us they're purchasing property and um and and a questioning what, uh, I guess, a questioning what uh what restraints they have or what virtually I want to know whether any, there are any uh is any zoning that impacts what they can do with the property. We get, I mean, I haven't seen anything like that, but uh, I could imagine a question similar to that.
Um. Not quite sure what, what is applicable there Sherman.
I was just wondering if we've covered everything that, that we would want to speak to them about or talk about.
Well, you know, a lot of people don't realize when Act 250 kicks in, that might be something to add. You know, any development over an acre because we don't have zoning.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you want me to put something down for that Barbara?
Did you say any property over an acre?
Any development over an acre.
Well, I don't think that's correct, Barbara. Act 250 doesn't kick in.
Yes, in Rutland town it does.
It does Dana, or Norm.
What?
In Rutland town it does. There's a one acre rule.
There's, there's a simple Act 250 process that, you know, if you're, if you're just building, uh, if you're building a McMansion on, you know, 20 acres or something. I think if there's a much more simpler process, Act 250 process to go.
So minor permit, minor application.
Minor application, yeah, as opposed to a major one which would be like a business or, you know, a factory or something.
But, but I, I'm now puzzled because when Ray Page came in with the uh, three lot subdivision on his, uh, I forget the name, Benettonus. That was a three lot subdivision, was over one acre, but Act 250 major or minor was not mentioned.
Because it wasn't commercial. Right?
So it's one acre, over one acre commercial. I'm not sure what it is. Let's just, we don't need to debate it now. It's just something to check.
It's, that's what it is though. Without zoning, it's any commercial development over one acre in Rutland town is subject to Act 250. Which is one of our biggest, that's one of the reasons so many people there that are for and against this zoning thing. Some people really believe it should be different. Then we'd have what, 10 acres? Is that right? Somebody tell me.
Yeah, yeah, it jumps up to 10 acres if you have zoning.
But that's, that's for another discussion.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. We need to add the commercial there because, and you know, that's when we were talking about the, the limousine storage and, and some of those other projects, they might fall into Act 250. Depending on the size of what they were planning on. So that's good to have there.
Basically, what we're, it seems like what we're doing is developing an information sheet to be given to the proponent the first time he meets Bill. Rather than questions when they come in to see us. And that's okay. I mean, that'll streamline the process too.
Other observations or recommendations for us to include on this list?
We're going to, um, specific questions that we're all comfortable, like, um, you know, size of a building. I don't know. Like specific, you know, what type of business they're planning to have? Should we list those out or do you think that's getting too in the lead?
So I, I think that when this, when someone comes in and they start talking about the, the perfect example is that Realtor, he came in and he had a potential buyer and wanted some information that if we could direct them to this list, whether it's through Bill or whether it's even us reading it quickly to them and they think these things through. I think it's, I, I don't think that it's, should be at that point, we should not say something like, so what is the plan there? That, but, but these are the lists of things that we can direct you to that'll help guide your your potential buyer or, or your project to, uh, you know, to, to move forward until we get to a different level, you know, I, I think that's what it's all about. I, I appreciate everybody kind of indulging my, uh, my little brainstorm here, but I, I just thought it was, it, it, then, then we wouldn't limit them by asking them questions that maybe we don't have an opportunity to, to have any decision over. And especially once it hits, if, if like that, that limousine company, um, they would have been, I, I'm pretty sure would have been Act 250 would have taken effect. And then all those kind of the points that we were bringing up and maybe driving them away was a kind of a moot point. You know, that would be something for them to figure out beyond us, I believe. And I really think that this would help kind of have them understand that.
Yeah.
I guess one of the things that comes to mind about the limousine project and other projects is the access to state highways. And that might be something.
It's on here though. I think we got that Norm. The, the brought Byron would either.
Oh, or, or the state. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we've got that. Um.
Excuse me.
Dana, we may want to, may not want to limit the Act 250 process to just minor applications because there may be a major one that comes our way. Someone that wants to do a, a big commercial, like a, you know, a car dealership or something goes in. You know, where the Nissan place used to be or something like that. So we could. Yep, there's that. And I'm wondering, do we want to include um, our view sheds? You know, um. Letting these people know whether they fall into one of these scenic resources. And even though we don't have zoning, we've got some preferences for how they develop that piece of property.
Fine, I think in general, directing them to the plan and, you know, site specific where they're proposing, where the property is and what, you know, land use.
Yep, so, um, maybe add the, um, you know, referring to our future land use map in our land designations as well as the view sheds. And that certainly falls into that aspirational category of what we'd like to see in these parcels of land. Okay. And then maybe something at the end, um, that um, you know, other, other specific questions that arise. You know, pertaining to that, that proposal or that kind of development, just so we don't I mean, I don't know what the group thinks, just so we, we don't tie our hands completely and not be able to ask any follow up questions.
Barbara?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the need for that is on this document. Right now, this seems to me to have taken a different direction. And I think for the better than what I initially understood we were trying to do. This looks like an information sheet on the front on the front end for the first meeting with Bill. And maybe we could do, as I look at it, maybe we can do it with some wordsmithing after it comes back to us next time. Something to the effect that you may also be asked certain other questions relative to these issues, but this will help us along and make the process more orderly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. I think that's a great start. In fact, I'm not sure there's anything else to put in there, but um. Per Dana's suggestion, if Bill, you want to circulate this around to us before the next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, and Jerry, you, this is, this pretty much covers what what you were hoping?
Yeah, I, yeah, and I, once again, I, I appreciate everybody kind of grabbing hold of it and running with it a little bit. I, I certainly never meant for it to cause a problem at all. I just wanted to make sure that, I, I think this is a good approach to it. To be able to say to somebody when they're at one of our meetings, you know, these are some things that you want to consider. You're going to do a project and here's kind of a basic list if they haven't already gotten it from Bill. And, you know. What are you doing? I don't, I don't think asking somebody what they're, what they're doing and, and, and what they're up to is out of our reach. I just mean, I think we need to be careful not to push somebody away, that's all. Initially, you know, let them, let them kind of roll with it. Once they get our initial questions and have these guidelines, then they can roll with it. And maybe they'll be back and maybe we get more specific at that point, but.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and it's a good checklist for us too, so we don't forget to mention something. Okay. Okay. All right, so you're sending out an email now Dana. So.
Yes, you have it. You saw me post the email. Everybody has a copy.
You sent it to all of us?
I did, just in case. Why should I, why should I single out Bill? I could give it to you and then everybody could mark it up and come next week or next week, next time. And if they have thoughts that they want to add, they can send them to Bill. And you have a reference tool. My work is done. I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Okay, so we'll have one document to work from next time.
Yeah, Bill, I, I think Bill can put that together in, in some form that's a little bit more than just a spray of bullets, but.
Okay, and include any comments we have.
Yeah, if people, that's what I was thinking. If people have comments or they want to add something to this, just send it to Bill. And he's got it and you have a reference point so that it's not guesswork. Why should I be the only one who has a copy besides Bill? Okay, am I still sharing my screen? Yeah.
Okay, so if everybody could take a look at that, um, we usually send out the agenda. Let, let, let's say the Friday before the next meeting. Get that, have that as a deadline. Which would be. Call up my calendar here.
Eighteenth, so you're talking about the twelfth.
Okay. Okay. Any announcements or news from any of you folks?
I did get a call from Green Mountain Power, uh, notifying us that they're going to be taking down a power line in Center Rutland. And what it is, is from the generation station at the river here, that there's a power line that goes a few spans down Vermont Route three and then it turns and it goes to West Rutland. It's a, it's just, it's a smaller line, but they're going, they're going to remove that line. They just wanted to notify me that, uh, that they're taking that down. They're going to start doing it like next week. They waited until uh, everything froze over because they got to go across the, the valley there by Otter Creek and whatnot, but it's just, it's just an old line. They're going to remove it.
Completely.
That, yeah, they're doing things differently, but it, but that line's going to go.
Does it run through the Pocket Park area now?
No.
Will it be disturbing any of that? Okay.
No, 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 they wouldn't. They wouldn't be disturbing. In fact, I think, I think they're going to leave the piece of line that goes from the generating station down a few spans down to the Vermont Route three. There's, there's two power lines that cross that go to West Rutland. They come from North Rutland to West Rutland. And, uh, I think they're just going to take down the line that goes from right, right by the highway, the one that goes right straight to West Rutland. I'm not sure how they're connecting things up or where they're going from there, but it's, it's just a small line from that generating station. So, but, so I don't think they're going to be touching anything along the river by, by the Pocket Park. In fact, it's on the other side of the river.
Okay, great.
For what it's worth, that's.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else? Before we get to the most fun part of every meeting?
There will probably be a subdivision application for the next meeting.
And, okay, and do you have an idea where that's going to be?
Uh, it is going to be Velco and the Thomases. Uh, Velco is looking to acquire, uh, so Thomas has about, about eighty acres off Route seven north at Post Road where the, where that solar development was going to go. Uh, they have about eighty acres there. Velco is looking to acquire about thirty-two acres of it. Uh, so that's what they are, that's what they're looking for. Uh, they asked me if, um, if it, if we'd be just considered a boundary line adjustment. And I said, being that it's thirty-two acres, no. So I said ultimately that'd be up to you guys, but she was trying to get it done as a boundary line adjustment for thirty-two acres. And I said, it's pretty much going to be a subdivision, so.
What they're doing is they're adding some land around the substation right along the Post Road area. They're, they're, they're getting more, more property to surround that substation and both sides of it, all around it.
Good, good. Maybe some wetland issues in there?
I don't know where, I don't think so. We have, I have a copy of the map where they're proposing it. It doesn't, I don't think there's going to be, no.
Okay.
It's back from Route seven. It's not, it's not closer to Route seven. It's not, it does not come close to that archaeological site either.
Good. Uh, have they asked for the permit application?
Yes.
Oh, good, good. Okay.
Where is the land in relationship to that solar field that the company from Oregon was going to build?
It's the same land.
I'm sorry?
It's the same land.
I see.
Only on the north end of it.
The north end, yeah.
And Velco is going to buy it.
Yeah, it, it, it abuts property they, Velco already owns.
Doesn't it abut Route, uh, Post Road also?
No, their, the, their existing property does. This does not.
I see.
Could they be picking up a little bit, Bill, along Post Road there? East side, maybe?
A little bit, maybe.
Yeah, I think, I think they might be taking.
A little bit. Yeah, right by where that pull-off used to be. They'd be taking that, that, that section between their transfer station and Route seven, that corner right there. Uh, as well as some property that wraps around behind it, so. But we, we get that, well, if, if that comes, we'll, we'll get that for, we'll, we'll get that with, uh, the application, so I'll make sure to include that.
Yeah, and I think that's the right call, Bill, that it is a subdivision. It's a lot of land.
Yeah, it's, it is a lot of land.
And, and they don't own it. I mean, you know.
Right, right. Okay.
It's not adjusting. Yeah, it's just not a subdivision. It's just not a boundary adjustment. It's outright purchase of land.
Right.
Okay, good, good call. Anything else?
Fun next time.
Yeah.
That's all I got. That's it for announcements, Barbara?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, okay, I think, I think we've heard them all, so we can finish up with the meeting minutes from January seventh.
Move to approve?
Okay, moved and seconded. I didn't notice anything. Norm, that's your cue.
My major contribution. Uh, I didn't say anything either, Barbara. It's hard to agree with you like that, but I didn't say anything.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry to put you through that, you know, that difficult position.
Yes.
I, I'll step in, Norm. I'll help you out.
Okay, thank you. Did you see something that Barbara and I missed?
Yeah, there are two things in, uh, old business number three.
I'm sorry?
Old business number three. Uh, the review and research will be done this spring and something is missing, something meetings with stakeholders and the public in the summer. And stakeholders, I think is one word. Otherwise, you're actually holding a stake.
Should we say, and meetings with stakeholders and the public will be held in the summer?
There's something missing, yeah. I don't know what it is, but the review and research will be done.
I understood the meaning of it, but if, if you need the clarification, I want to pose a motion.
Okay, Dana, that's, okay.
Oh, yeah, it should be probably meetings conducted with stakeholders and public in the summer. I don't, I don't know. It just was jarring. I didn't follow the flow.
Okay, you have another one?
Nope, that's it.
That was it?
Yeah, that and, and stakeholders is one word. It's a typo, but otherwise we'll all be out holding stakes.
We may anyway, but.
We may anyway. That's all I have. So I'm in my emotion to, uh, to approve the minutes as, as corrected.
Second.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Okay, all those in favor? Say aye. Opposed? Okay. We're at the adjournment part. Thank you, everyone, for, um, doing what we did. Buckling down and, and coming up with those those things for the, the list of questions for developers. That worked well. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the suggestion, Jerry.
Thanks, Dana.
Good ideas, Jerry.
Anyone want to move to adjourn?
Don't move.
Thank you, Howard. Got, Sherman, you had something else?
No, I was.
Phil's second.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.
Thank you.